It's forty-five. All this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing, proof of city agenda. I move to, or I'd like to amend the agenda by removing number one in city business action items. What? Yep, that one.
Fine with me.
Any other amendments?
Um, why don't we add an item to authorize the posting of the city administrator job? Either replace that one or add it somewhere or other on the agenda.
Do you just want to amend number one to authorize posting city administrator?
You're just gonna strike and replace?
Let's strike and replace that and replace. Are you doing the minutes, Alan? If you want to do them, I will stop. If, yeah, that's fine. We don't, we don't need two competing minutes.
Well, I'd rather have you concentrate on the business at hand.
Yours?
What would you like to title the subject?
Um, authorize city staff to post city administrator job opening.
Any other edits?
I'm just gonna caption it just so it matches the rest as discussion of.
So it's fine.
So, and we'll see what comes of it as a business item.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. And?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes? All right. Open public forum.
Anything, Barton?
Um, well, I can just say a little bit about, um,
Say, Barton. Want to just announce who you are?
Barton Winter, Birchwood, Five Oaks Lane.
Thank you.
And I saw in the agenda that there was something, or no, this is a, a public notice about looking for someone with a spray washer, some kind of capability with air compressor, possibly. So anyway, I'm, I just want to say that I'm, I'm certainly interested in the painting part of it. And I, I did make initial contact with the individual who, whose specialty is painting tennis courts and basketball courts and some hockey rinks, so. But anyway, I, I have mentioned that to the parks committee, and I don't know what the timeframe is exactly about getting funding for that. And whether we have, uh, funds set aside at this time, or whether we have to vote on that, and are we gonna vote on that tonight? Or, we did mention that in the Parks Committee meeting, maybe one or two times ago, that was gonna be about five hundred dollars. That would be for one coat, the center, one-fifth, the crown part of the rink. So anyway, I'm, I'm certainly wanting to give you any guidance that I can see, but it, the material is called acrylic resurfacer, and it's especially heavier paint, so it should cover up all the aggregate that we have, which we have quite a bit of heavy aggregate on the, in the asphalt there. Make a perfectly smooth surface, so. That's the intent. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Barton.
Thank you, Barton.
Thanks. All right, announcements. We're looking for someone to power wash the hockey rink. So if anybody in the community has a power washer?
Well, Alan, you volunteered yours, didn't you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, at the, sometime during the last meeting, I mentioned having one at my disposal, and so if no one from the community shows up, I'll be bringing it by, and I assume that I can leave it with Jim or with Kathy. I don't think there were people rushing to volunteer one since Thursday.
Inboxes flooded. Right.
All right. On to presentations. We have County Attorney Kevin Magnuson. He's gonna do a presentation on crime trends.
Well, thank you so much for having me.
Do you want me to talk?
All right, is this working? All right, good. Well, thanks a lot, and I won't take up too much of your time. I just wanted to introduce myself and talk about a few things that are happening, the way our office is set up, what we're doing, maybe some of the crime trends that we're seeing. I have to say that it's good to see Alan Cantreud here. It's been a while, and you're in good hands with Alan, that's for sure. So, um, I'm from Lake Elmo. I'm living in Lake Elmo. I'm living in the same house that I grew up in, and it's from eighteen eighty-nine. My father sold it to me, as is.
Or any other way.
A lot of this stuff is still there. It's held together by, you know, spackle and wallpaper, essentially. So, I know my wife's had a bad day when there's a real estate agent in the driveway, you know, it's one of those kind of places, but it's home. I'm, my wife and I have a thirteen-year-old daughter and a five-year-old son, and back-to-school time is always a fun time. So, originally, I went to Lake Elmo Elementary, then I had a mini-ha-ha academy for junior high and high school, college in Chicago, then I was in the military. I was stationed in Germany at the very end of the first Gulf War. I was sent there, my unit was there, but by the time I got there, the ground war was over, because it was pretty short, which I was fine with. And then when I got out, I was in a graduate work, and I was doing a PhD in philosophy at a German university, and then at a Belgian university. I ended up graduating with what they call a sensiat, essentially a master's degree in philosophy. And then what do you do when you have a philosophy degree, and you don't want to, you know, have a Santa suit as your uniform to make, to make money? You go to law school. So I went to the University of Minnesota, and then went back to Europe, took some classes there, and my first job out of law school was at the European Commission in their, essentially their antitrust enforcement divisions, like DOJ kind of thing. Wound up back, you know, took the umbilical express back home, like so many of us, and wound up back in the Twin Cities, where I was in private practice for twenty years doing complex business litigation. I don't know how many of you know my predecessor, Pete Orpitt? Does the name sound familiar? I miss him like crazy. He's such a phenomenal person. He, he talked me into joining the office. Then he talked me into succeeding him, or at least running to succeed him, for the county attorney when he retired. The thing is, is that he managed to talk my wife into it, who was wondering why being widowed for seven months with an infant was a good idea. Somehow Pete did it. And then after he announced his retirement and endorsed me, you know, he found out he had cancer and died ten days later. It was tragic. And if you haven't, if you don't know Pete, all I can say is that I think you were a soft four. He was just an amazing, amazing person. And he left me an office, you know, that was in, in really good shape. A lot's happened since then. It, it, it's, it's quite different, believe it or not, and, you know, in the three years that I've been the county attorney, but I think, you know, I think I've honored the spirit of it, the values that are there, and I think we're moving and growing in a direction that Pete would have been proud of. Right now, we have sixty-one and a half employees. Half, it doesn't mean a, a short person, a half-time person, but, so it's about split between attorneys and staff. So we have about thirty-one and a half attorneys, somewhere in there. And we have five law clerks, too. So our criminal division, you know, I don't want to sound at all glib, or, you know, or make this sound easy, but it's, I mean, for me, it's, it's, it's simple, at least in, in principle, that my paramount concern is public safety. I have a lot of other interests that, you know, that we balance in the pursuit of justice, but public safety is paramount. And that's because, you know, and I'll talk a little bit about this, but I believe in working, you know, to rehabilitate and help those people that you can. I just don't believe in shifting the burden of doing that onto the community out of, you know, a secure environment. I think there's some folks who, you know, really see the benefit, and I understand that, of, of working, you know, to help defendants and help them, you know, get on the right path. But I just get, I just absolutely do not support the idea that the neighbors of that person should bear the risk that goes along with trying to rehabilitate someone. But we do, you know, tremendous amount of diversion, circle of justice, there's a lot of other things that we do. We're, and I have to say, the prosecutors in my office are great. It's not about notching, you know, putting notches in your belt or posting the heads on spikes outside the office. You know, we do, we try to do the right thing, the right time, you know, all the time, just trying to make sure that justice is done, nobody gets, is punished too severely, too leniently, and that whatever options we can to work with the victims and help them, as well as, you know, try to deter and rehabilitate as well. So you can see, in the office, we have about fourteen hundred referrals from law enforcement a year. We don't investigate cases. They come to us from law enforcement. So if someone calls me and says, hey, someone's stealing money, I say, we'll go talk to the, you know, your local policeman, or, you know, police person, or the sheriff, or whatever. And then when they give us a referral, you know, after it's been investigated, they refer it, they refer charges to us, and then we look to see if that's something we can prosecute or not. We have a pretty high rate of, of charging the cases that are referred, so out of the fourteen hundred, you know, we charge about twelve hundred. So that's like eighty-five percent charge rate. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons that you might not choose to, to, to charge a case, you know, insufficient evidence, you know, the procedural errors by law enforcement, unavailability of a victim, or uncooperative victims, or witnesses, you know, there might be a policy-based decision based on which jurisdiction could have the best result, whether it should be federal, whether it should be our city or some other city that may have very similar charges, cases, and then, you know, sometimes that will, you'll do a plea deal where I may dismiss a count in exchange for two guilty pleas, and a guilty plea for the same thing in another jurisdiction, knowing that it doesn't decrease the amount of time the person gets, and it gives you two secure, you know, certain convictions, rather than two trials where something might go wrong. So there's considerations like that. I think a lot of people don't necessarily think about that, but, you know, most of the stuff we get, we charge. And we have a, a very strong relationship with law enforcement, you know, and I think the fact that it hasn't grown more, because, you know, I think they're, I think they're doing, you know, a lot of work, the fact that they've stayed level has a lot to do with the success of, and the, and the skill with which our prosecute, or our, our law enforcement investigates the cases. So particularly Dan Stari and I, sad to see him retiring, but we've developed a very good relationship, and I did not know that it can be kind of unique for a county attorney and a county sheriff to, to work as closely as we do. I think it's something maybe has to do with giant egos, I don't know, someplace, and, but we're fortunate in Washington County that we have got very ethical, capable law enforcement across the board. Makes our job a lot easier. Talk a little bit about crime trends here. I mean, it's gonna highlight, you know, the, the twenty and twenty-one caseload. You can see, and let's see if I can get this thing to work, but it's not showing up on there, is it? In any case, you can see that, you know, auto theft related, and that's, that's every kind of auto theft. You know, it was, I mean, pretty high in two thousand eighteen, fifty-five was kind of low, but then when the pandemic hit, you know, obviously, and we all know about this, it really jumped. And so you can see in, in twenty twenty-one, there were ninety-three of those cases charged. We've, I think we've made progress in, in getting it down, you know, it's still way too high, you know, forty-six, forty-seven is still too high, but it's trending in the right direction. Also, criminal sexual conduct. There was a, a slight bump in twenty twenty-one that may have been related to COVID lockdown, other things, but for the most part, the, the causes for each case, you know, vary, and it's not as much of an opportunity situation like, like some of the auto theft and burglary kind of crimes are. Homicides, you know, there was a time, not that long ago, when we averaged about one a year, but, you know, I guess we're growing with the times, unfortunately. So, you know, now four, five, six, seven is probably the, the number of cases we'll get in a year. Auto theft. So this is the picture of ignition after someone took the Kia, Kia Challenge. And so here you can see someone removes the cover on the steering column, there is a gap in the ignition system that, or the, you know, the key, the, the key connects the circuit, but you can wedge something the size of a thumb drive in there, and that'll complete the circuit and start the car that way. So, we saw theft, but, but one of the things that, that is, I think is really interesting is that, you know, when I was young, you know, I think the, the entry-level crimes were shoplifting and smoking a bunch of dope and, you know, and that kind of thing, and then things kind of got worse. Now it's joyriding. I mean, the joyriding is a serious problem, and every, a lot of people are talking about it. Joyriding happens because, and it happens with young kids, because someone will steal a car, and they gotta get all their friends in, right, and they'll drive around and they'll commit crimes, that's what you do in a stolen car, apparently, and, and then the kid who's invited along for the first time is gonna be sort of encouraged to, you know, shoplift to do whatever they're doing, and then next thing you know, that person wants to try stealing a car as well, and the cycle repeats. And that is something that I think we've seen as a relatively new phenomenon, probably over the last, you know, five years. Definitely exacerbated in COVID. What's also driving a lot of this stuff is social media. You know, when you, when, when someone's sitting around in COVID and they're not, you know, they're not going to school, I don't know about you, but, I mean, at the time, my wife and mother-in-law and I were trying to get a nine-year-old to do online learning. It, I mean, the three of us had our hands full, you know, and she'd flop around and refuse to do it, and, you know, eventually get her there. So imagine if you're a kid without a whole lot of structure at home, and then you're missing whatever structure you had at school, and now all of a sudden you're on the street with a seven hundred dollar iPhone and nothing to do. What these kids are doing is watching other videos on TikTok or whatever, and they're watching crimes being committed. And so we started to see the phenomena of these, like, sort of flash crimes. You know, for a while, we'd see the smash and grabs at department stores. That's because somebody saw it in, in Los Angeles, you know, or, you know, with the, with the auto theft. That's a big driver of some of that stuff. I will say that, you know, Woodbury's got the flock cameras, the license plate readers, automatic license plate readers, and they've been really effective in locating a lot of these cars. Cottage Grove and Forest Lake are in the process of, of getting their permits approved. You know, there's things to be careful of when instituting that sort of thing, like everything, but we're finding that it is a pretty significant aid to locating vehicles that are wanted for whatever reason. So this is a statistic or a chart that just is still the thing that, you know, spills me away and has me very concerned. So in two thousand eighteen, you're looking at thirty-five adult fleeing cases, fleeing from, from a police officer in a motor vehicle. Twenty twenty-two was up to a hundred and eleven, and there are a lot of reasons for that, and we can talk about that, but, you know, the fact is that something happened in our culture that allowed that to happen, some kind of, some motivators that, that were contributing to that. You know, in two thousand twenty-four, we were down to seventy-five, and that's still way, way too much. And we're still trending down, but it is still, you know, a phenomenon that we're seeing. And it's dangerous. It's really dangerous. It's dangerous to law enforcement. And it's, you know, and it's dangerous to, to folks in the area. So our sex trafficking, our east, so that is the worst acronym ever before, before my time, but it's the East Metro Human Trafficking Task Force. And Pete started it, my predecessor, around two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, with, with, you know, with law enforcement, and it's, we're really fortunate to have it, because by having this task force in, you know, the, the Washington County area, that local presence makes a huge difference. If we didn't have it, and we just partnered with BCA, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension or something like that, you know, we'd be focused on Minneapolis-St. Paul with maybe some effects in, in, in this area, in the East Metro. But because we have a well-established force here, it does make a big difference. One of the things that I focused on is runaway kids. You know, there was a time when somebody ran away, you went to the Greyhound bus station to look for them. Now it's all social media. These kids, often if they run away, they've already met somebody online, and often they have no idea who that person is, or it's not the person that they say it is. We, our task force has got, you know, unique capabilities in terms of equipment, software, we can get into phones, we're really good at getting the warrants from self, you know, phone providers, so you can get location data, all that kind of stuff, pretty quickly. And so what ends up happening is, now that we're putting the word out that, tell us about your runaway situations, is they'll contact the trafficking task force, and we can get in there early enough and try to locate the, the runaway kid pretty quickly, because, you know, the amount of time you have to get there before that person is, you know, more susceptible to just going that, down that path in life, is fairly short. We had a case in, in two thousand twenty-four where a grandmother, a fourteen-year-old girl in Cottage Grove, called Cottage Grove Police, who contacted the, the trafficking task force. They were able to, she was using a, a communication called TextNow. It's an app, it's like Snapchat, these, there's tons of different apps out there, they're changing all the time, you can't keep up with it. But that's a different issue about what to do with kids and phones. But they were able to, they were able to get the location data from her phone, even though they didn't have it. They were able to get subpoenas, track the phone, and they found out that she was likely to be at Boyd's Motel in Newport. So they went there and they found this, the girl alone in a room, wearing lingerie. She'd been there for several days and had been sexually assaulted by the man. By using her phone, they were able to get the man to come back to the hotel, to the motel where they arrested him. He was charged with first-degree criminal sexual conduct and received a hundred months in jail and will register as a sex offender for the rest of his life. And that's one thing I'd like to point out, that, you know, you want to see a person like that taken off the street, but at some point, they're gonna get out. And so sometimes what I'm thinking about is, what charge is most likely to get the person to require as, to register as a sex offender? That has long-term consequences, and so, you know, that may not always be, you know, the same, the same process with different charges. And so things like that play a role in deciding what we're gonna charge, or if we're gonna do a plea deal, you know, if one of the things we can get as a result of a, a guilty plea that's certain, it's adequate time, but also that registration. So we do the sting operations. Been doing them for a while, they're really successful, you know, the, sex trafficking is, it's kind of like dandelions, you know? They're there, when you spray them, they're gone, but the moment you stop spraying them, you know, your lawn's full of them again. And that's really what, what the sex trafficking is like. They, you know, these are all individuals that were darkened our door at some point and spent some time in the Greystone College, as it were, and, and I had to blur the faces out because I gave one of these presentations, and someone came afterwards and said, that's my ex-husband, and I thought, maybe we should, we don't want to re-traumatize anyone. But in any case, what we're doing in these sting operations is, we have an investigator who's posing as a, as a juvenile, as underage, and so, you know, we're, we end up charging someone not just with soliciting for sex, but it's soliciting sex from a minor. And, you know, those are the kind of situations, obviously, that we want to get. We're also spending more and more time trying, and it's a lot of work, but trying to get on the dark web in other places that aren't as accessible, and looking for people who are out purposely trying to find minors. A lot of these guys will get caught up, and they'll, you know, they'll be total minor, and they don't care, and that's a problem, and they'll be arrested and charged, but, you know, the, the people that are sort of, you know, if you get one every two or three years, but it's a real predator who's out there, you know, looking for young kids, you know, that's a huge win. And we've got the ability to, to do some of that. We also do recovery operations. So this is the same girl, and eight different shots. Now, this is not someone that, that we encountered, this is actually from some material that's from a national organization that I'm using here to kind of show the, make, make the point that this is just such a horribly damaging life, and, you know, no one goes into this for this life, obviously, but between, you know, the drug addiction and the control that are sort of developed, you know, it gets to be an incredibly difficult life to lead. And when people ask me what they can do, you know, what area do I think that people outside of law enforcement can have the most impact? I think it really is on the recovery side. There just aren't a lot of places that, that where you spend an hour with someone after, you know, they're, they come in thinking that they're, they've, they've got a job, that someone is gonna pay, and, and then they end up meeting up social workers and law enforcement and everything else, they take the phone, try to figure out if they can see who, you know, who, what contacts she has, but they're also spending a lot of time just trying to, to do the recovery, and oftentimes, they're successful for a little bit of time. And one of the problems is, you know, where do they go? And there are a couple shelters out there that'll take them, but, you know, it's kind of hard to leave a world for the uncertainty of that. Now, there's a place that's just about to open, Cory's House in Oakdale, that I'm a big fan of. It was, it was a real estate person and some others just got together, and they bought a, a really, really nice, built, I think, a really nice house in an upper-middle-class neighborhood in, in Oakdale. You would never know that it's a, I mean, a group home, and I probably told the neighbors after they bought it, but, you know, it'll have half a dozen, or I think maybe even a little more, kids in a group home environment that is just like, you know, the equivalent of Ward and June Cleaver in, in twenty twenty-five. And I think that's important, because then there's a, a view of life, you know, outside that world, maybe reflects back to the life that they had at some point, and, and then there just has to be so much hand-holding and help to get, to get people through. But the successes are amazing when you, when you have. I'll just talk just briefly about juvenile prosecution. Again, public safety is the number one priority. My, the criminal, the juvenile division head has been, you know, in this business for seventeen years, phenomenal person named Tony Disroich, and he's the one that has been preaching that since my first day before I was in county attorney, when I was just working. He said, like, you gotta think about public safety, try to help these kids as much as you can. Public safety is your number one responsibility. And, you know, most of the cases that we review are cases where a kid did something stupid, and it happened to also be an offense. And so I believe very strongly in holding that person accountable, but, you know, you want to use the, the, you know, the right-sized hammer for the right-sized nail, and you don't want to overcharge, and if you can keep a felony or, or something else off a, off a kid's record, it's important to do so. And the vast majority of kids that come through this And the vast majority of kids that come through the system that commit crimes like that go through diversion and they complete whatever anger management, you know, could help with their truancy, chemical dependency, mental health issues, whatever. When they get out, we never see them again. And that's the vast majority. I think there's only, less than ten percent of the juveniles have, have, we sought to certify as an adult. And I would say every year, it seems like there's like ten cases, ten individuals that, and often it's many, many different related cases, that take up most of my time. And those kids are in serious trouble. I mean, they've, you look back as far as you can in their records of when they're eight, nine, ten, you know, often there's already got involved, you know? Soon as they're in double digits in some of those cases. And, you know, and they're just in juvenile detention, secured, whatever. They get out instantly, they're right back in the same situation. And that's, it's just a tough, tough thing to deal with. But that is not the norm. Again, more juvenile trends. I just want to point out the motor vehicle theft. We had a designated prosecutor just for juvenile motor theft during the COVID because there was so much of it and we needed someone who could keep their finger on it because it was such a trend and it was so different than what people had been experiencing. But, you know, when you're, when you're going, when you have a spike like that, you know, that's definitely COVID. Happy to talk about that if you'd like. I don't want to take up too much time. Just wrapping up here. But carjacking was a big deal, obviously. And carjacking became its own law in 2023. Now, we had not had an adult or a juvenile carjacking since 2023 until recently. And a couple of months ago, we had our first one. Someone at three twenty-five in the morning ordered an Uber from one of the larger health club chain. And then the, the Uber driver drove this individual to within a block of his home, where then he threatened the individual, tried to take his cell phone, threatened him with a knife. The driver got away and ran. And so now you've got a guy, I think he just wanted to take the cell phone and get out of the car, you know, get a free ride. He's now stuck with a vehicle and, as the police are coming. And so he takes off on a hundred-and-some mile-an-hour chase, you know, into Wisconsin, where he's arrested there with some stop sticks. And now he's going through the process here. You know, again, that doesn't sound like the kind of carjacking that, that is kind of popularized in media and, and, and a lot of the stories we hear. I do take some comfort in, and this is the only one that, that we've had now in a couple of years. And I'm just hoping that that continues. So this is, um, this is a car that crashed in Woodbury, I believe. It was a pit maneuver. You can see the squad behind the car that pinned him up against the tree. That juvenile has got a gun in his right hand and a phone in his left hand. And he's being pursued by an officer. He was caught, charged, and his, his trial is pending. I'll just really briefly talk about the civil division. That's where I worked when I was, you know, an assistant. It's kind of the junk drawer of the, the attorney's office. They do a little bit of everything. Alan knows all about this. But it's probably, other than keeping your, the streets safe and stuff, it's, it's what affects most people the most and they don't really think about it. I mean, all the contracts for the county are reviewed there. All the child support collection comes out of there, you know, your tax appeals, you know, guardianship, civil commitments, which has been an issue. I could do an entire presentation on that, all the data practices stuff, you know, to make sure that the public write to know and they're getting the information that they're entitled to. And we do a lot of that work. Also, the expungements is an important thing. So I just want to give a shout out to the, to the civil, the unsung heroes of the, the county attorney's office. With that, if there are any questions, I know I've taken a little bit longer than I anticipated, but I, I hope that was worth the, worth the ride, as it were.
I have a few questions. Thank you for coming in.
It's my pleasure.
Yeah, it's really, it's, we appreciate it. It's nice to just get a little, just your thoughts when we're not, and sometimes, you know, we meet the share for people when they're having some sort of an emergency and it's nice just to have you come in and just give us some information.
It's great to meet you as well.
I just, um, have, have there been any changes in the county's policy or stance toward federal immigration issues in the past eight or nine months?
Yeah, and this is something they've talked about at the county, Dan Stari, you know, has talked about it. I mean, that's a federal issue. We obviously don't want to interfere. You know, we'll, within, within our mandate, do what we need to do. But, you know, we're not immigration enforcement officials. So it hasn't been an issue. We haven't had, you know, a lot of people or, you know, we don't have federal agents, you know, trying to have us detain someone on an immigration detainer where that starts to become an issue. We haven't had that situation yet. But I know Dan Stari well enough to know that he understands that county sheriff does its job and federal immigration folks do theirs, and we should probably keep it that way.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
It's my pleasure. Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next thing on the agenda, the WCSO monthly newsletter.
It's just in the packet.
Just in the packet, yeah.
All right.
Don't know that we need to do anything on it.
And then Chris has some updates on the website.
It's a small town. We have multi, multi-talented people.
So I don't know if you guys noticed, there's been a lot of changes on the website. I'm currently fixing some of the, the non-up-to-date pages and there's some pages that was kind of doubled at the same time. So I'm kind of cleaning it up and making it very user-friendly. I've, I've been hearing some good things of the changes. I'm still waiting on some feedback from, you know, see what people are seeing. That's kind of the only update. You guys have any questions?
I, I would say I noticed that there's different file formats for some stuff. So some meeting minutes will be in a Word file, some meeting minutes will be in a PDF. So is it, can we just make sure that they're all uniform?
Yes. Um, that was actually, that was there when I started.
No, I get it. I get it.
I'm converting everything to PDFs.
Okay.
Because at least for me, they're easier to read online instead of having to download them. So, I mean, whoever's doing the meeting minutes, if I, you guys could send them to me as a PDF, that'd be great. But otherwise, I've just been converting the PDFs myself.
The other thing, not, not to nitpick, but the, the naming convention is different for everything. So all the documents have a different naming convention. So I don't care what, what naming convention you pick. Just, let's just do one naming convention for all documents.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my next project is to see what, would it, what was the name convention, if there was one, and go on and try to keep everything the same so it's easier to, easier to search.
Yep.
And, and Chris, I know Ryan and I spent some time looking at the website. I think Bridget, you were on the website committee for a while, weren't you?
Long time ago.
Long time ago, maybe. But, I mean, I think.
There was a page for the website.
Yeah. I'm not sure that it, I know there, anyway, I won't go into that too much. But, I mean, I think we're happy to talk to you. Any of us are. If, if you're, if you have an issue or something, you know, so, or if, if you need a little help. Because I kind of, I'm not a website, I'm always the wrong kind of engineer, apparently, for everything. But, but like, I think we can kind of work through stuff, you know? I know you're kind of learning how, and I think this is working out well for us. But if you need a little help with stuff, I can probably help you out too, so.
I know I've been experimenting, experimenting with some plugins to see what would work well for file management.
Okay.
Think I landed on something, but I got to do some more research. But, yeah, otherwise, it's, it's, there's a lot of work to do, but it's, it's getting there.
Yeah, it's looking good.
It is. Chris, if, if we have thoughts and ideas about what we'd like to see on the website, I know you're fixing it right now, but is it okay if we just send them on to you?
Of course. If you guys have any suggestions, send them my way and then I can, I can, if it's possible to get them on there, I'll do it. If it's, if it's not, I'll let you guys know. But I'm always open to suggestions.
That's great. And then, secondly, I know Alan Mitchell has said for many years that there are issues with the website. At some point in time, could we reach out to him and see what is on his list and if we fixed?
Yes.
What's on his list? That would be great. And then the third thing, when we think that it's in pretty good shape, would it be possible to ask the community to review it and give you any thoughts, ideas, or fixes that they might see?
Absolutely.
Okay. We don't want to do that yet. We want to.
No, of course.
But let us know when that's a good time to do that.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
My question for you guys is when it comes to the files, how far back do we want to have that on the website? Do we want to have everything on the website?
What's the, what's the record retention schedule, Alan?
It probably varies depending on which city you're actually talking about. So some records have to be kept. Are you talking specifically about things like agendas and minutes and, and meetings, that sort of thing?
Yes.
I'm not sure if we have a retention schedule for those specifically. Probably definitely don't for anything posted on the website, actually as a scheduled, here's what we have. Many cities will go back at least five years, you know, maybe longer.
I was just going to say, if we, if there was some sort of record retention.
I mean, there is. It's basically agendas are kept forever, but not necessarily on your website, just available.
I was going to say, if there's some date that's set by a record retention schedule, we should just use that. But if it's a forever thing, then it's.
Well, some are, like I said. I mean, you've got your resolution books and your ordinances. You know, those things are kept at least in paper in, in the, in the file, so to speak. But as far as posted to the website, you know, it gets a little cumbersome.
Yep.
At a certain point.
Is there a way to archive?
I am currently working on that. I'm hoping to be able to have everything archived, but to have everything showing neatly, I could go back, I could have like agendas and meeting minutes back five years.
I, I'm real hesitant to get rid of, I use that stuff all the time. Often going back quite a number of years. Like, for example, I was just looking for the water superintendent's contract and it was from 2013. And so it's important, I think, to me to have that stuff available. It doesn't need to be available as it is now with kind of, with everything else, but just to keep that stuff online is, I think. I mean, we have no shortage of contracts that are many years old, so, you know.
Should we have a policy?
We've got them all, just whether or not they're on the, on the website. Sorry.
Oh, should we have a policy or a write-up about what we keep on the, on the website? Seems like we should.
Well, yeah, I, I agree. I think there should be, I'm just throwing random numbers out. Five years of agendas with everything else being archived. Some sort of archive, you know, repo where we house that stuff. And that can be online as well.
Yeah.
Just not fancy when you look at it on.
Out there, front-facing, yeah. And it might make a good subject once it's an agenda item. You know, and then we can, everyone can be here to talk about it. So, and the public can come in and say, hey, you know, much like Mr. Hankins, you know, hey, I go back all the time and look for something that might be longer than five years old.
Do you know, Ryan, how to archive stuff like that? Or could you, because I don't necessarily know, other than by doing it by hand, how I would go through our website and archive that stuff off? Maybe we can touch on that offline or something too.
We can look at it.
Right now, when, I've been looking at other cities of how they archive all their stuff. And I've been asking around from, I've got a few friends who also work in other cities. And they're asking around of how they manage their archiving because they have all of their agendas in this, I don't know how to explain it. It's all a little archive plugin. So if I can figure out what the, that plugin is and be able to get, get everything in there, then it's, then having everything archived is going to be a breeze.
Yep. And it's a discussion for.
Seems like it solves that problem.
Are you interested in working in city administration?
Is there more to it than just website?
I'm just teasing you. I'm just teasing you.
Well, it's work that's been needed for so long. We're so glad you're doing it. Thank you.
No problem.
And then we'll have a discussion about policy.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good. In fact, let's do that at a workshop. Ryan, you might, I'm, I'm just out of my depth on it a little bit, but Ryan, you might know better, have some ideas.
Yeah, we can. I think the workshop's probably the best venue for that discussion. Anything else, Chris?
And that's all I got for you guys.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, city business and action items. Item number one, discussion on authorizing the posting of the city administrator.
I can make a motion if there's no discussion. Okay. Yeah, I move to authorize staff to post the city administrator position online and in the White Bear Press, but not to require it to be posted. So authorized but not required. Does that make sense?
Just fishing, just seeing what's out there?
Okay.
Well, do we have the ad? I mean, just saying, position open?
I guess, yeah, I don't have specific stuff. I just want to get an authorization out because usually we say that should be authorized by the council.
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Please.
So my understanding is we're interviewing somebody now that applied for that first posting. So does that mean that we have to repost everything?
That's why I say authorized but not required to post.
So should I just say if necessary?
If necessary is all, that's all I'm trying to say is just if, if unfortunately Mary fell through, I think if the next person falls through, then.
Then repost.
Let's post it, but.
That makes sense.
That's all I'm trying to do. So we don't have to come back and have a meeting just to, so that's my motion.
A second.
On favor? All right. Motion passes. All right. Number two, discussion of the RFP for city planner. Progress.
So I didn't add this. There's an RFP up, but only on the City of Birchwood website. The resolution asked for it to go on the League of Minnesota Cities website. It's not there. The, we should be getting, the deadline for it is September eighteenth. I don't know what people want to do with respect to, do we, I doubt we're going to get more responses than from Bolton and Mink. Maybe Ben. I do think it's probably, I mean, given that we've only seen eleven thousand dollars in building permits this year, it seems like we're ripe to save some money on city, city planning by moving to an hourly rate. I don't know how people feel. I guess I'm kind of fine with just having Bolton and Mink come in and give us a presentation and then seeing if we want to post it further at that point. Otherwise, I think it's going to be a pretty short deadline for people if we want to try to post it at the League of Minnesota Cities and get more bids. We can just see what happens. I don't think there's anybody, you know. Honestly, at this point, I think we should just see what we get and discuss it in October.
I think if we have in the resolution that it was going to be posted on the League of Minnesota Cities, it needs to get posted on the, posted there.
Do you want me to see if I can get it posted there?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Fine.
I can try and do that.
I do think it would be good to have more than Bolton and Mink and Ben.
I, I don't think that's.
We use Bolton and Mink for so many things.
I don't think that's, that would be bad. I think. I'll, I'll see if I can get it posted on the League of Minnesota Cities in the next day or two.
Yeah, I think it's just important that that's what, the resolution says, that's what we do. Yeah, I think it's just important, if that's what the resolution says, that's what we do.
The other thing, and this goes into the discussion of the Citizen Portal, but our Citizen Portal that we use is not in very good shape. And I believe in the RFP, we say somebody has to know about Citizen Portal to use it. But if somebody came in with something better, I think that that would be a consideration. If they're coming in and they're thinking that Citizen Portal is going to be great and this is what we're going to use, that's going to be a disappointment to anybody.
I mean, I think the goal with any of these online systems is to eliminate the paper pushing and have everything for every permit updated in there and not in the basement of Village Hall. And so, you know, and I also think Citizen Portal got implemented very quickly.
Oh, it did?
And without a lot of care for the details of getting it to fit well in the city. And so maybe what we do is either get some consulting on it to get it improved, or I think we need to do something there. And maybe we don't figure that out right this second either, but let's, that would be another great workshop item, I think, is figuring out what we're going to do with Citizen Portal. And maybe we just get a quote from the gov office people on that.
Yeah.
Because they certainly advertise that to us as something that would take care of more than I think it's taking care of and would like eliminate half a staff person, yeah.
If we spend some time on it.
Yep.
I guess my point is, if we're having people come in to say that they're interested, they want to do the RFP, and they're assuming that our Citizen Portal is ready to go.
Yep.
It's not.
Yep.
So we just have to be clear about that.
Okay. Yeah, fair enough.
So then I can talk about Citizen Portal.
I was going to say, then we want to jump right into the Citizen Portal, Bridget?
So, yeah, I think this, the action item for me is to, is to see if I can get that posted at the Lake of Minnesota Cities, and then I'm fine with, let's move on then if there's nothing.
So I spent a morning with Therese, and I was the client, and I kept on applying for permits. And it was, it was really interesting.
Yep.
And seeing what happened. And overall, this is a system that was put in quickly with people who were not expert, who I'm sure were trying to do their best with it. It is clunky and it is filled with errors. Therese started to write down all of the errors that we saw. So for example, if you apply for a fencing permit, you'll get a letter that says, thanks for applying for your chicken coop permit. So, so I mean, it's some basic stuff like that that needs to be fixed. And apparently, we get to send that stuff to the administrator of the system, and they, they will fix it for it. What I don't know is if somebody internally can be an administrator of the system. And so I'm going to find that out. But the other thing is, it's only being used for permits where there are no variances. So that's it. Assume, when you go in and you have to mark whether there's a variance or not, if you mark that it's a variance, that's game over. The system doesn't do anything more than that. Then it becomes a manual process where the office reviews it, you know, talks to Ben, et cetera. And I think that there, I know that there is logic in the system that would at least walk you through some basic city codes and stop it or give you an alert that this is what you're going to have to do if you have a variance, if that makes sense. Other cities, I understand, have implemented this. They've put their codes in, and then the logic flows in reviewing this. What Therese would also say is, it's not a good, and I didn't really, I didn't totally understand this, but she said, it's not a good tracker of history. So she has to track all of the history that happens with any kind of variance. So maybe we don't, we haven't turned that on in the system. But like I say, any variance is not being helped by the system. And there are bugs with any other permit.
So did we exhaust any sort of training that would have been provided with the purchase of the software? Do you know?
I don't know, but I've asked Therese to set up a meeting with this administrator and she and I. So I'm going to ask those questions.
I mean, we basically paid him $2,000 to do the implementation. And then we pay $2,000 a year for the software. And I think we just kind of dumped all of our permit forms on them and said, here's our permit forms, which aren't, weren't real correct in the first place. And then it just kind of got in, that's what I think happened.
And don't get me wrong, the staff is working really hard to do this.
Yeah.
The system is really self-optimized.
I just have a hard time believing that someone would sell you, you know, software as a service and not have any sort of, at least a training video, like some sort of, you know, curriculum, like this is how you use our software.
Right.
Because they want you to keep using it.
Right. So anyway, I've got more work to do, but I just wanted to give you an update, especially as it relates to any RFP and any vendors that would come in that were considering that this system needs help more. And it can get better.
Yeah. And I think Ben said that they've worked with this software before, haven't they? Bolton and Mecav?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bolton and Mank said that they had, they had worked with it, yep.
Yeah. Anything else, Bridget?
Nope, that's it.
But I suspect any of the engineering firms have worked with it. I, I'm not that worried.
It's like asking if someone's working with Salesforce.
Well, I mean, what I'm more worried about is Jack Kramer basically does everything on paper. And, you know, and that's just how he's going to do things. He's a good enough guy that it's probably not worth making a big deal about, but at some point, maybe Jack will retire and we'll want, and we will get to kind of an all-online system, so.
Is that, is that a bottleneck?
Well, it means that anytime, as far as I understand, anytime staff deal with a permit, like a building permit where Jack is involved with the building codes, they email it to him, he prints it out, he writes a bunch of stuff on it, and then they scan it back in. That's your understanding as well? Yeah. So a bottleneck, I would say that's a bottleneck. And I would say, I don't want to go hire a building inspector. But, because I think Jack does a very nice job, but it's not ideal. And I don't, I don't think that's a software problem.
If we get the software working and it's relatively easy to use, and if we sat down with Jack and said, what's getting in your way, maybe.
And maybe that, and maybe that works, and we can give it a try, but that, you know, it's, it's.
It would be nice if that was the only problem that you had, was Jack's manual input.
Yes.
I can't believe that if all of these engineering companies are familiar with this software and use it, that it's just not being optimized.
Yeah.
So it sounds like training and just fine-tuning it to the city, which didn't happen.
Yep.
Is what's needed, and it was live-fire exercise for a lot of folks who aren't here anymore. And so I think that had something to do with it.
Oh, yeah, I think we did them as a service. I think we just dumped it on them.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's.
Thanks for taking time out, Bridget, and sitting down and.
Well, I'll keep at it, it's what I can do.
Anyway, I've got this noted as Bridget presented a brief report and played secret shopper with the listing of the city's permitting and input portal. And it needs work. Portal will not accept permit applications that require variance. For example, system does not track history at all either. Next step is to meet with the software vendor and explore improvements.
Sounds good.
Sounds like what we talked about.
Yep.
All right. Discussion of repassing the 2026 preliminary budget to reflect the $70,000 state grant money for the Lake Links project.
Yes, I can give context on this. So what we have to do to apply for the $70,000 is we have to have four documents, one of which is to specify that we approve spending $70,000. I know. Alan was here. Did I say that right, Alan? So that's, that's really all that this is. There's nothing new, there's nothing. It's just, it's just a requirement that we have to have for this application process.
Yep. And one of the more specific details is that it has to be integrated into the spend of the city next year for us to be able to get basically access to the funds. So the bonds have already, they're already out there. So the money is just essentially waiting for us. And so by showing that as a budget item as an input, we can then show it as an output. So that's all this adjustment is. So it doesn't change the levy at all.
Nothing. Nothing changes. The budget doesn't change.
Because it's 70 in, 70 out, and it's not coming from taxpayers, or at least not Burchwood taxpayers.
So there's no line item on the, on the budget that's changing?
We didn't have it in the budget before. And now with the updated budget, there is a line item for Lake Links for $70,000.
Trying to find it.
On the income.
I saw it this morning. It's on the most current one that you sent out, Brian?
Not the one in the agenda?
I don't have a full packet handy up there in Peter.
Is it in my, on my desk?
It says page nine.
I looked at page nine and I didn't see anything else. Oh, here, $90,000?
No, but 70.
That's building permits.
Okay, it was a note from Marcia Olson yesterday.
Yeah, I remember the note.
Closed budget 2026 file.
Okay.
And then if you bring that up, because I looked for it. It is under general fund receipts. You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. All right. Okay, that all makes sense now, sorry. Do we want to?
So it's not, it's not reflected in the current agenda packet? That's what I'm getting?
It's on here. Do you want to see? It's on this one that Marcia sent out.
Yeah, I have that emailed.
Yeah, okay.
And as long as you can see it there, if it helps at all, I've got it teed up as a motion to approve preliminary budget with $70,000 addition in revenue from state grant for Lake Links, perenn, no levy impact, closed perenn.
Yep. But can we just make sure that Chris adds it to the agenda that's posted online?
I think you probably heard that.
I know, that's right. Thanks, Chris.
Consider it done.
Yeah.
So I will move as Alan stated.
A second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. That's the culmination of our meeting with the representative is at the, at the, at the state, so that was very productive and helpful by them.
Yeah, they were great.
All right. Last, the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? I second? All, sorry, go ahead.
I just think it might be good to do a roll call vote on this because we're authorizing large amount of funds, and that's technically required. So did you second, Ryan?
I did second.
Let's just do, if you guys don't mind, just do a quick roll call vote on this.
All right. Hinkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Motion passes? All right. That is everything. Any alibis? Nothing? All right. Meeting adjourned.
Good deal, thank you.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Oh, thank you, Alan.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.